You're live.
Okay. I'd like to call this meeting of the library board order and we'll start with introductions. I'm Kevin LaBourne, vice chair, vice, whatever I am. I'm gonna run the meeting tonight.
Nancy Giger, Library Trustee.
Darren McManus, trustee.
Dave Melon, trustee and county commissioner.
Amanda Seacham, library director.
Erica Turnus, librarian.
Okay. We'll move on here. We need to approve the consent agenda, which would be the agenda, the meeting minutes and the bills. Any questions?
No movement.
In a second.
Any further discussion? Say none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, we'll go on to the library director's report.
And what a report it is too. Lots going on. Our summer reading program wrapped up with celebration picnic and entertainment with we'll sing songs. We had eighty-one people at least coming to enjoy a meal, playing hoop hoops, doing the bubbles. We also had a hundred and seventy youths participating in the reading logs portion of the program. Ninety-one people saw the Peregrine Falcons, ninety people came for stunt chuggling. Five storytimes were held by Erica from June to August with sixty people attending.
Is that each one or a total?
A total. You want to add anything about the program this year?
Um, just looking back at last year's stats, we're down a little bit, but pretty close. And I'm pleased with that considering that we had kind of a shaky beginning to our summer. So to still be pretty close to last year's numbers is great.
How does it start? Is it all one story that you continue or is it a different story each time?
It's, uh, it's usually several stories and, um, and songs and a craft.
Awesome.
And just a reminder too, that this summer reading program is not only the reading logs in the summer. Excuse me, the storytimes and a couple of large events. Erica does programs few times, what, three days a week this year where we had two craft afternoons scheduled each week where everyone was doing a craft, pearler beads being the favorite, I think. And also we had tried a new role playing game.
Wow. It's impressive.
Yeah. Yeah, very robust. Staffing, I'm super excited. Catherine Maggie started already this week and is gonna be a great fit for us. And this evening I'm gonna be onboarding Anna Lisa Winji for custodian.
She's so nice. She used to be our neighbor in the condos. She rented one of the condos.
Okay, yeah. Super. Um, I'm gonna skip technology and bring it in later to our, another part of our conversation. This, we've, we've had a set of things going on in the building that I've needed to address. One of our handicap buttons stopped working and we couldn't get it back functioning again. And we called up the Northern Doors from Duluth to help us repair the actuator. And it did have to be replaced, so I'm glad I made the call. And then shortly after that, another button started behaving intermittently. So I've got ourselves back on the schedule with Northern Doors to bring them up. And this time I'm just gonna replace the remaining three buttons while they're here. Also tying into our conversation about library improvements. Maintenance has recommended that we consider a schedule of door replacement every five to seven years on the front doors. And I, so I'm asking for an assessment on what that, um, an estimate on what that cost would look like for us. And then I'm also asking the technician who's coming up, what help they can give me in researching the cost of an emergency exit installation. So I'm gonna get as much into that one return service call as I can. Great Lakes Alarm upgraded some of our equipment servicing our security system. They were back up today to finish the job. We had a few handles on our toilets break and, or stop, you know, stop responding. And so we've had to replace those. And, uh, we also have some paint bubbling up in the men's room on the wall. So we have some different theories about why that might be, but no answers. And so we need to explore next steps with the bubbling paint.
May I ask a question about Great Lakes Alarms? Is that another system that should be checked periodically? No?
They are, so I'm not sure how to answer that question.
I mean, on some kind of a schedule, like every five years or. I just, I know from, I'm on the, also on the board of the condos and many of our building systems, we are getting on a, you know, regular schedule of being checked either every year, every couple of years. Ultimately, I think it is a more economical way to go. Hopefully you can catch problems, potential problems before they become real problems.
Um, so my, my experience in working with Great Lakes Alarm for the system that we have right now is that they're able to monitor the activity on all of our devices. And so they just remotely can see if there are problems occurring.
No problem then.
Um, and then I also am able to call them and tell them which number is giving me which zone error. And then they just walk me through it. Um, we have had them up here once in the last three years, I think, to replace parts in some of these little guys in the corner. But other than that, we've been pretty solid. The cell communicator unit that I just recently installed with our current updates. That's a part they've been trying to get me to go for, for a while now. It moves our communication from POTHS lines or like grounded telephone lines into the internet so that, um, the response is almost immediate. But they had reasons for wanting us to update that had something to do with cellphone towers. I don't know. Now we had our own reason. So.
Oh, you know what's so interesting is, um, the Y and this building were kind of done at the same time. And the Y also had, um, year and all levers.
Okay, we're right on schedule.
It's very interesting.
How many years is that? We need to.
Well, and thinking about the handicap, you know, like of course they're all getting hit the same number of times usually. So they don't all go at the same time. It makes sense, but.
Yeah.
And apparently we're flushing each, the same number of times, both the Y and here too.
We have to have a party schedule too. Party replacement.
Thank you for that information. Okay. Um, I recently attended a board meeting with the Library Friends of Cook County and it was just an excellent discussion between us that lasted for an hour. And we were talking about some of the changes they're having over there. They've had a little turnover. They've got some fresh board members coming on. It's very exciting time for them and for us. And, um, we, so part of my conversation with them, I will bring into the library improvements part of our meeting. And then just, I wanted to report that visitors have been absolutely delighted to be able to use our fax machine here. They're so happy that it's available in the community. Okay, any other questions there?
It just reminded me of something very tangential, but are there notaries at the library?
No. No, but we, that's something that we've been kind of bouncing around at the front desk. We've been asked probably once or twice a week.
Right, yeah. Someone was asking me.
The problem with notaries is usually you can find a notary at the bank. They're closed on Saturday, so working people can't get over there. There is a woman in town who is a private notary, I think. And you can make an, I, I would have to ask my husband, but he knows her from his work at the hub. But I think it would be wonderful if the library could offer that service because we ourselves have had issues when not being able to get to the library, I mean, to, uh, get to the bank during the week.
It would be having someone, the notary, working on Saturdays because it's a person who holds the license, not the entity.
Exactly. But if there's a person who holds the license, it could be noted somewhere, perhaps on the website that a notary is available on Monday, Wednesday and Saturday, whatever.
Thank you.
And I don't know what's all involved with becoming a notary, but maybe worth looking into.
Iowa was one when I worked for the school district office and it's, it's pretty easy. It's a fee and like an hour training.
Okay.
Wow. Staffs for everybody. Okay, super. So, um, we're moving into a section called library improvements and it's about setting priorities. Two board members asked me to bring this back around again. I think we talked about it last in February. And just to tie it into the Y, uh, we have library strategic goal number two, which concerns the wise use of financial resources to honor public and private contributions. And that includes a call to develop a policy for allocating the contributions. Goal number three is about providing the environment and resources needed to provide quality services at the library. And it includes a call for trustees and staff to develop a ten-year plan for the facility. And I think that was Enel's contribution when we were doing our wrapping up of the strategic planning. From my perspective, it would be helpful to set priorities for the rest of this year in 2025. And so to that end, we have some tools for discussion today. And there are several pieces that we will want to talk about a little bit. Boy, this conversation got bigger and bigger the closer to the start time of this meeting. So I'm, um, we'll see how I do here. It will help me if you have good questions for me or like an idea of where you'd like to go from here. But our first document here that we're gonna look at is the library, the, it's the list of library improvement priorities. And I don't, like I said, I don't expect, um, that we're just, uh, we're gonna like finish all the work today. So, um, if I throw too much at you, it's okay to, um, we can table it and we can come back to it next meeting. It's gonna be fine. The first thing I want to do is do some additions and deletions to the list. So the first one is there are problems with the collection development improvement section, which is soon, which I wrote and assumes that our collection does require restoration. It mischaracterizes the high-quality work of my professional staff. And because I didn't consult with my development team before moving the idea into consideration for prioritization, I would like to pull it. This was a significant error on my part. And, um, I just want to underscore right here because I'm not sure how this part of the, I'm not sure what you interpreted from the collection development segment of the list. That the collections that Ryan and Erica are cultivating in our library are exceptionally well-loved. And they are frequently praised by many people in the community, so I owe them an apology for this section. We're gonna pull that. Then the next two pieces, one is the front door replacement thing where I mentioned that our maintenance men suggested we should, uh, plan a five-year schedule for door replacement, in which case we're due. And then also I've learned that the Department of Justice issued a rule under Title II of the American with Disabilities Act to ensure accessibility of web content for people with disabilities in government settings, of which we are one. We need to become compliant with the new rule by April of 2027. I do believe that I had our library website, um, reviewed for accessibility. Now I can't remember what it was, but it's when Sandy, um, of two, two dogs in the web, or I can't remember the name. When our web administrator was exiting, we had her look at this. But it's possible there are more requirements in the new rule. So that needs to be done by April 2027. Okay. So wrapping up the additions and subtractions component. We have a, a list here, a pretty solid list of options for library improvements. And we have an amount of money available as well. And, um, like I said, I, closer to the meeting is like the more questions I had and the more information I would like to have prepared. But we currently have about, I believe, three hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars for things like library improvements through the 215 fund. Okay, about three hundred thousand dollars there right now. We are receiving about eight hundred to two thousand dollars of donations a year. So that represents the growth. We also have growth in interest earnings, which fluctuate quite a lot. This year for the first six months of the year, we have acquired about four thousand, three hundred dollars in interest earnings. So that's your growth on an annual basis. I, I'm thinking seven to ten thousand. Just as an aside, if you were to look at the financial reports that I provide to you, you would see more monies coming in. It might look like we have closer to twenty-three thousand dollars at this point in this year. But it's good to know that, um, our contributions, grants, donations, line item also includes things like the Urhammer Grant, which funds, um, library books every year for the children's collection. And we also receive the friends money and that goes in. So for example, this year, six thousand dollars has come from the Library Friends of Cook County. And it's intended that we'll use that in the year. So it looks like there's more coming in, but it's intended to be spent annually. And so it doesn't, it doesn't follow us into the next year. Any questions about that part of what money is available right now? Okay. So with that then, I sort of turned to the board here and wanted to know how you might like to proceed in a conversation about setting priorities. Oh, see, I jumped ahead. I do want to talk about program spending though. This one is kind of near and dear to my heart. We have sufficient professional staff on hand for advanced library work, including programs, of which we do very robust programs. We just talked about one of them. And we have no line item. We have no budget for programming. So it's kind of amazing that this continues to happen every year, that we're able to produce the programs without having a budget to do that. What we end up doing is chasing the dollars. Like, um, with the Library Friends of Cook County in the last few years, what they've done is they would say, it's grant time. Tell us one program or one item that you want to purchase that's in like the thousand dollar range. And, um, and, and then we are trying to match our programming to the available funds kind of as our programs are trying to be solidified and put into effect. I would much prefer it if we were able to provide a budget that I can give to my staff and let them know in advance what is going on. And the way that we could do that, there are multiple ways we could do that. One of them is raise the library budget and create a line item that has never existed before for us. And I think is common in many libraries because of our library friends groups. But I wanted to just put together, uh, the set of programs that we generally do each year. So 2025, if we were to do the program set, we're always striving to do here. It would be a summer reading program and a winter reading program. About two adult programs per month. And we, we need, um, some funding for the speakers and presenters. We also rely on legacy programs that come from Arrowhead Library System and provide us, um, with free program, free programs to us. And also we sometimes have staff-led programs. For example, every one of Erica's, um, storytimes for children. Or, um, Brian does the, the, um, role-playing games, the Dungeons and Dragons and the writers' poetry group. And then sometimes we do have, um, individuals from the community who prefer to donate their time and their, um, program presentation. Especially local people sometimes prefer to do that. And so there's a, there's an amount that we can project about what we would need just to have that service level. We have been doing Friday night reels. Winter Wednesdays was a concept we were thinking about bringing back, which generally would partner with the Friday night reels where we have every Wednesday night would be a program for adults or families with local interest. And then on Fridays would be the Friday night reels set. We are considering right now what that might look like and it might not be the full set. But if we funded it, it would be this much. And then there's Juneteenth, Indigenous Peoples' Day and Pride, all which go along with our strategic priorities to, um, provide service to underserved groups and underprivileged groups and also Earth Day. This generally would cost fifteen thousand dollars, fifteen thousand, six hundred dollars, um, if we did the whole thing. What I am proposing to the board, when you look at your list of priorities, is I'm asking the board each year to agree to allocate that amount of money or to hold it aside so that we know we have it and we can do our programs. We are still assuming that we're going to be pulling from the Library Friends of Cook County to the, um, to, um, whatever comfort and ability they have to provide. And, um, we also have, I forgot to mention, some Arrowhead Library System crossover dollars that can be spent towards programs. So we're still gonna be using the resources we have in the past. But it would be nice to know the money is there and we can just go with our set. Any questions on this piece? Super. Okay, now, back to what I said before. Now, board, what do you want to do with all that? How can I help with this conversation from here?
Uh, how old are these games?
I imagine they were installed in 2011.
Um, but five years is the recommended? Like, that seems aggressive. But, but they're needing replacement now, so like ten years was that, I mean?
So Northern Doors is coming up to look at them again with me. The technician's name is Zach. And, um, he had some ideas because I don't know if you're, I don't know, does everybody know that we have problems with the front doors closing properly? They, the, there's a center post in the very front outdoor, um, thing that every year we actually file it down in different places to try to get the pieces to set into place. It has to do with the cold and the settling of the building. And so, um, yeah, Zach was giving us ideas about how to deal with that this winter as the cold comes back in. And but I've asked them to give us their perspective as well.
That seems more of, less of a door issue as much as a foundational issue, so that's next level for sure, but, um.
We can replace the door.
Yeah, right, exactly, yeah. And if that's gonna solve it for however long, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I bet it'll be longer, but we want to be, you know, on top, on top. And maybe five years is what it'll take, but like this schedule-wise.
It's possible too, when we do that replacement on the doors, we, so our internal doors don't lock. And like during the pandemic, it would have been fantastic if we could have, um, left the internal doors locked and the external doors. So we had a portalway where people could come in and get materials. Um, there are opportunities to do something like an indoor book locker in place of the bench that's in there or something like that where people can come in after hours and pick up. For security thoughts, um, just being able to lock the second internal set of doors would be very valuable. And so that could be a part of that conversation as well.
I like that.
Thank you.
Um, another, another thing we can add to the list, that was a suggestion from, um, Brian Hansel, was, um, kind of Makerspace equipment. Regarding like laminating and. So I probably didn't port it to you, but that's probably because he sent it in Messenger, but I was gonna, um. There was a whole, there was a library in Iowa. They sent a bunch of.
Probably things like the cricket, the cry cut cricket thing and, um, like 3D printing or 3D print pens.
Less, I think less that, as much as just like making stickers or embossing maybe. Cause in Dubuque, um, they have a pamphlet they sent too. But maybe there is some kind of 3D printer stuff too, I'm not sure. Um, but I wanted to pass that on because it sounded like a great idea and something all ages could use. And it could also be very, um, you know, business productive or whatever. On the lines of kind of fax machine access.
Super. We've also been talking about sewing machine, a sewing machine being a good fit for this community.
They're a binder puncher, I don't know, all that kind of stuff. Ooh, like sewing machine, like book binding sewing machine, because that'd be pretty killer.
Or clothing sewing machine?
That's probably not, isn't that?
For my very small box.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, tiny, tiny box.
Yeah, was that something that people would take out a sewing machine or use here? I don't know. I mean, I can't imagine, well, I don't sew much anymore, but I can't imagine coming to the library to sew. But if I didn't have a machine, maybe taking one out on my card. You know, because they are portable.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And just space flies, that may, make more sense too. To start there.
I, I think the Makerspace idea is really interesting. We have room for it.
Well, and it's essentially the pictures he, not, not especially, but the pictures that he sent were, was just kind of like a counter of little laminator press type of stuff. Sorry, I don't have more specifics, but I'm gonna look now.
I think we have enough information to be able to discuss priorities. And then, and then if you pass that on, when I, uh, refresh this and send it back out with the updates, we'll get that in there.
Great. But as far as prioritizing the rest of the list, um, I feel like I'm not as alarmed about the rotunda after looking at it. I feel like that's not gonna just fall apart. Um, emergency exit seems very pertinent. And then if they're saying the boiler is need replacement, I'm like, oh, okay, well. Go through that again, I guess.
And they were not willing to speculate on when.
I'm sorry?
They, they wouldn't tell us when, yeah, how long or how much.
Mm-hmm. And, um, yeah, and so then the other air source heat pumps, I think, could be prioritized over that boiler replacement.
I don't know if you can replace a boiler up here with air source heat pumps. Not gonna, they're gonna heat you sufficiently.
That's true. Um, our conversations with the technicians where you really need to have up here that backup because they fail at a certain temperature.
And it's like minus ten or fifteen. It's not an unusual temperature.
Right. I was just thinking it might prolong the need to replace the boiler, you know, like put it off, or not prolong the need. But put off the, the need. Um, if, if we're relying more on that than the boiler, but.
I am not knowledgeable, really knowledgeable about these things, but it. Knowledge, really knowledgeable about these things, but it seems like the air source heat pumps. The heat sources for efficiency and replacing the boilers kind of all go together. Is that the case? Or not? I mean, maybe they doesn't have to be done at the same time, but it's all.
They all tie together.
They all tie together, and if that's the case, maybe we need to have. Someone give us a an idea of sort of a one, two, three, what do we do first, what do we do second, what do we do third? So that we don't do one. And then something else fails which affects the one we've done. Does that make sense?
It would just be air source heat pumps or boilers, cause the repairing the boilers is done.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's done?
It's done, done, done. That's got a.
Oh, so it is, alright.
Yeah, yes, go tea.
Yes, I wasn't.
I like the idea of like as far as that um outdoor drop box um. Getting some, just putting some other coating on there, some sort of art see. If that's an option, I think that would be um kind of a win-win scenario to make it look. Fun and pretty and also um. Protected, but.
Yes.
Do we need a larger one, or is it sufficient to?
I feel the size is good.
Okay.
Um it, you know, when we're closed. For four days.
Sure.
That's a problem.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Library in Missouri has a window, I'm gonna call it a window. And there's a conveyor, you put the books. Right to where you use it, if you wanna use it. You don't have to pull a lot of the. But they're saying they got the opportunity to build a new building because the turn around.
I would say that the size that we have. The cart does not fit through our door.
That's what I was gonna say. Can come in the door.
Yes.
So that other, other cart thing, right? Is that, or am I?
The cart inside of it that holds the books that get dropped in.
Too big, it's too big, oh dear.
So we have to take another cart.
Lame, yeah. So if we could do like a smaller cart, like a mod inside of it, down to a smaller cart or something, or you're saying we should get a different box?
I thi- I think the size is good for the volume of returns we get on a holiday weekend. But I don't know, but we, it would be an opportunity to talk to my staff about this, about what, which direction we wanna go. I fancy the idea of Sam Zimmerman art.
Yeah.
Doing a community themed um. A a community theme on there. Um that, it's sad that it's a trash can, but matching the trash cans and things that have been placed around town, that looks so beautiful. Um I'm not sure, I have to investigate whether I'm required to do a public call for art. Or if the board can select its artist, so but um. I don't know, I've had that in my mind too.
I think it's a good idea.
Can we talk about the computers? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Replace the computers.
Yeah, yay, let's do it. Computer replacement. Windows has recently upgraded to Windows eleven. And I tried to update our computers and they are not compatible. We purchased our computers in sets. Uh but I believe that started in um twenty seventeen when I first arrived here. And it took three years to get all of the technology that we purchased at the time installed and up and running. But let's just call it twenty seventeen since we've had the computers, that is. Um longer than a five year span, which is again the the magic number for replacement. These computers um. So I assuming we have about seventeen computers that we would be using for staff and the public. And I'm estimating a thousand dollars a piece, so seventeen thousand to twenty five thousand dollars to replace those. To make them compatible with Windows eleven. Questions?
That seems like something that should be a priority.
Yes, I think so.
Especially if it's affecting your work computers, not just the public computers.
Okay, follow up question. I have Jeremy from Sundu Technology coming to visit at the end of the month. Uh because I, I asked him immediately, is this something we can get, or is there a part we can update? Is there, you know, something we can do to prolong the life of the computers? Um he's coming to do an assessment, he thinks there could be a. So knowing what each of our computer types are, he thinks there could be a little tweak we could do. Should we just do replace and fold on the computers, kind of go down that path? Or do we wanna try to see if it's possible to fix them, the the machines?
But the time to update seventeen machines is gonna be. Significant.
Yeah.
Yeah. Plus, I think. My own experience with computers and having a home office, which obviously is just. Very different than having seventeen computers. But I always have felt that at a certain point, you just really have to get the new technology. Because after Windows eleven, there will be eventually Windows twelve, et cetera. And then you may spend all the money on tweaks, which will be also a question of investment of time. And then in a year or two or whatever, you're gonna have to replace them anyway. So my thought is, go ahead and replace them. You know, get. What, get the best possible for what, you know, the money. And um. And then we'll be good for five years maybe, when we'll have to do it again, but.
That's Anna. Trying to figure out how to get in. But would you please, she's working around it.
So um. May, I I guess maybe I don't have enough perspective on how these computers are used. When I need to use a computer here, it's largely um either. Looking for a book or um printing something or something. I'm not editing videos, right? It's not like a high, I don't need a high power machine. And so I'm even surprised we need computers because so much is kind of cloud based. And I don't see these as like high performing machines, so. Kind of the the future, right, is that cloud based computing and um I would like to investigate that. And have workstations, absolutely, and maybe we can have more. If that's beneficial. For um for patrons, but I I know the. There's a demographic of teenagers who will be gaming, and so I'm sure there's. Something along those lines where computer performance or whatever, but um. If we were gonna drop a bunch of money, I think it could be cool to have a computer that could do video editing. But I don't know how many you'd need, like one or two, I don't, I don't know.
You'd probably need a Macintosh for that, too.
And we do have two Macs. Which we might as well look at, so if we add those in, that's two more computers.
Yeah, and they're expensive.
And also, um I wanna add. As I was trying to explain. When I was fresh here and had all the technology to install, it took three years. And um two years of that was trying to explain the case that we need to also afford the technician to help me. Because there are just so many, I I mean, it's a complete vernacular and trying to get all the computers groups to do the right thing. And be locked down or filtered properly. Um and it just takes help, the requirement for staff time is so significant.
I absolutely say it's a budget as well for the time for someone. Whose job it is to install computers, to come in and set them up for you. And is as uh what, efficient and and knowledgeable as the library staff. Are.
Yeah.
You guys are not computer experts.
So then we're probably looking, I sorry, we haven't researched cloud computing. But we're probably looking closer to thirty five thousand dollars in this case, don't you think, if we're um. You're gonna add two computers. What what are Macintoshes running now, like twenty five hundred dollars? Um so two of those is thirty thousand dollars and then some amount for a technician, I think.
Right.
Thirty five thousand.
There is a brand new. Macintosh system, I mean, that is actually. Aimed at people who do video editing and such, so.
One thing that Basil got recently that he's super jazzed about is a tablet, like an artist's tablet basically, but it's digital. Um I think that could be a really great addition to the library. Um they have standalone ones, which are very expensive, but it's it's basically just like. A hypersensitive touchscreen that you connect to any computer. Um has one of those little pens and it's pretty impressive though. Why I was thinking about that is just because. Uh you you don't need a high end machine for that either. Um it's kind of, you have some of that with that device, and so, yeah, I guess I I better, like, I'd like to better understand. Just the use. Like, there's the gaming, but then, I mean, are people trying to be. Content creators, or are we just, you know, doing queries and? And what are our tech needs actually, because I'd hate to. Um buy, you know, seventeen. Workhorse computers when really we just need like a monitor and a keyboard and, you know, connection to the internet.
I think along with that. Maybe. We should try to look ahead. I mean, who knows where this, where all of this is going, but I wonder if it would be worth, again, to. Ask some of the larger libraries, maybe Duluth or whatever, just what they, what kinds of technology they're offering their patrons. Not that we necessarily have to offer all of that, but just so we have a sense of that. Um I think that would be good. And maybe we should also talk to Jeremy about. Where he. Kind of where he sees these. This technology going, you know, like what is the latest in tablets? What is he seeing with Macintosh computers? Because I think you raise a really good point, and the other thing is, I think, in a way. My, you have to sort of buy your technology or plan it, not just for today, but for to- tomorrow. I mean, who knows what things will be like in five years, but you can't. Um on a personal note, many years ago, I needed a new computer and I didn't have a lot of money uh running in home office. And um. There, I had the choice between two Macintoshes, one with an older operating system, which was cheap relatively. And one with the newer operating system. And uh what I was told was, buy the newer one with the newer operating system, you will be able to update it, upgrade it longer. But, so in kind of in that spirit, I think we should look ahead. I don't see like the need for desktop computers decreasing. I agree. I agree too, so.
I disagree. Well, I think, I just think, I mean, they have desktops that are like, yeah, big now, you know, and I think that's all we really, that's what most of the machines really. Need Macs, you know, but then I was like, but there could be some power user creator or something, it's good to have that option, I just don't think that's.
Yeah, oh, I think it would make sense even to have a variety where you have kind of your daily use internet browser, email.
Yeah.
And your higher demand.
Yeah.
Higher processing power options. Do we know, have we surveyed or? Have library associations taken a look at, in general? What patrons want to use computers, I mean, do they come in and maybe wanna. Type up a letter, or do they want to, which is simple? Or do they want to edit a video, or? Do they need internet access, cause they don't have it at home? You know, they're. It would, it would be helpful, I think, to know. The trends, perhaps? I don't know if we could survey people, our users, but what what would people like in our?
My experience with the user groups here in the library is that we have a lot of people who just need. Internet, email, printing, print the UPS label, get the realtors paper printed out. Um and they need to be able to use usually PCs. That are in a format that is familiar. We also have youth groups who loved game and they're fluent in Mac, they're fluent in PC, they're like able to. Go wherever they need to go to play, and it's possible that they are ready for more. Erica, what's your sense with our users of kind of how public computers are used and? What might be wanted?
Um I think you're right, that the the bulk of it is that kind of daily, I just need to print an article off the internet. I need to send an email, um that kind of thing. Um and then you have this cohort that wants to game and. Really, if we. You know. If we could just. Dream a bit, a a space with their own spot to do that is really what they need. Rather than ha- taking over the daily use computers. You know, that would be the the ideal is. You know, just a pod like for something that would serve that purpose. Um and then I think if you, if you did have one or two, especially if we did kind of move in a Makerspace. Direction, if you had one or two that could do video editing and photo editing, that kind of thing.
Maybe one Mac, like powerhouse and one PC powerhouse, just in case. Um for, for like just daily use and and that sort of thing, what, do you think it could be practical just to have like? A stack of Chromebooks that people could just sit, just, you know. Take one out of the sleeve and just go sit down and do their thing? Or do you think we need a dedicated? Computer workstation?
As a concept for exploration. Um my experience with the Chromebook, here's one, is the screens are very dim. I'm I'm not really happy with the quality, and then um you can't, you can't put things on it, right? We don't have a lot of stuff, this is just for, in, this is just for like internet.
Right, yeah, it's a very small hard drive, maybe some have none, I don't know, but um.
But it would open up a lot of floor space, which could be like Makerspace Podland, right?
Who uses the computers on a daily basis, say, for their email and printing up stuff? Is it older people? Because if the Chromebook, I'm not familiar with Chromebook, but if the Chromebook has a dim screen. I have old eyes, you know. So I bring that up, because that might be something, say, that I come in and try to use it and. Wouldn't be able to really see well. So just something to think about the audience. Yep, and I think that familiarity would become. A a big issue, but it just isn't, it's not. Unless you're a kid in school or have kids in school. It's not familiar to most people.
Yeah. I so, so sometimes we have um patrons come in with. Uh like, so we have to have filtration and we also use a security protection program. Google Chrome will not allow the security protection stuff.
Oh.
But um let's say it's a laptop, you know, it doesn't have to be Chromebook, it could be a laptop. Um they have to be able to receive that. Protection program. I also have requirements by law to ensure that any computer that I am providing to the public is filtered. For pornography. And the way that we do that currently is by plugging it into a wall. It has to be a grounded outlet. Things that are connecting through our wifi are not filtered. And we have two separate internet services providing internet to our building. To allow as much access to the public on their own devices as possible with no restrictions to minor, uh uh like minors or adults or however that works. But in order to circulate. In order to circulate a laptop that's connecting through our wifi, I would only be able to give it to eighteen and older. We'd have to be checking IDs, or we'd have to be um anchoring them into the grounded system. We'd have to be checking IDs or we'd have to be, um, anchoring them into the grounded system.
So there's, forgive me for doubting. I have to believe there's a way to have the filter with the wifi. But I'm sure it's not just like.
You would have to apply it to everybody.
Yeah, cuz you're.
Or there could be.
It just, it would have to apply to everyone.
Because otherwise you could just connect to the public wifi.
But let's write that down, explore, um, filtering wifi.
Yeah, I think you'd be able to like somehow, if it, on, on the laptop, Chromebook, whatever, have it be only accessible to your filtered wifi and not be able to connect to the public, I don't know how or why that would work, but that's beyond me, maybe not.
So, backing out of the conversation, um, it's super helpful to get these ideas and the scope of considerations that you'd like us to have. But, um, let's do some research on the options on the table and our staff can figure out, like, if they're feasible.
As far, a- and as far as, you know, I think it's a bugger to do all seventeen at once. I, I would really like to see what Tweak can do to kind of, you know, milk the last out of these ones, but also make progress to the replacement schedule, like, uh, replace a third of them or something. Um, but I'd like to stagger it just so that we're not replacing seventeen every time, you know, like, I think it's good.
Oh, but you, budgetarily.
Budgetarily as well as just, I mean, I know it's more monkey business, but just, um, and maybe, maybe we just budget for it instead rather than actual staggered replacement.
I might point you just for a minute over to the, um, okay, hold on, let me write down that thought, can we stagger replacements? Your financial policy. This policy is written and managed by the board, it can be changed by the board. There, so there's a section in here that talks about um, the restricted, the account two fifteen restricted funds, these accounts are comprised of donations to the library and grants. And so some are designated for specific purposes. Generally, if somebody gives me a check and says, I want you to buy children's books with this, and that's within the range of what we're looking to do, I spend it. Because we, we are able to connect the requirement to the amount and generally we need what it is they're offering. Um, so then, under part D, it says that we're aiming to maintain a minimum balance in the account of ten thousand dollars, which is our insurance deductible. When the flood happened, the incidents happened a couple of weeks apart each time and we were charged two insurance deductibles, just for your information. And then it's suggesting an, an amount of twenty thousand dollars be kept in the account at all times for computer replacement, we can already see it needs to go closer to forty thousand, thirty-five, forty thousand dollars. And then when I look at the amounts of monies, okay, and then, sorry, I'm trying to paint a picture for you here. There's also this thing called the Hazel Matthews Fund. The way that it is set up right now is we consider it to be its own account. A prior library board determined that that was a valuable decision. And so there are conversations in here about how that money wasn't, i- is the board of that time intended that money to be used. The money from the, the Hazel Matthews Fund, the language in, the legal language in the contract for how we can use that is almost identical to almost any that we get. And it always says, monies from these accounts are not to be used in such a manner that it doesn't lessen or substitute for monetary support from the state, county, city, or any other source of public funds. Our split right now is about forty-three thousand dollars that would fit the account two fifteen restricted fund and two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars of that three hundred thousand something dollar amount that I told you is under, it's nested under Hazel Matthews. So, um, this could be a conversation where you revisit this policy also and determine if you want to merge Hazel Matthews and re-fla- re-flush out, like how much you want to keep in the account for what thing going forward. But, um, technology is definitely listed up in the two fifteen section, which has a forty-three thousand dollar amount associated with it right now.
And that's like, in my mind, um, the hardware or maybe the infrastructure. I also see in Hazel Matthews that there's the professional consultant fees. And I think an IT professional consultation could be extremely valuable as well as like our, our heating system professional consultation, but um, maybe that's a twist or a bend to the intent, I'm not certain. Typically, when I think of professional consultant fees, it's lawyers, so, but, um, something that. I'm sorry?
You have to have engineers too.
Yes.
They get their bridges built.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we're working with an architect right now and I think that would be a good fit for that category.
I'm perhaps picky, but looking at the twenty thousand dollars for computer replacement, um, I think that whatever we decide, whether it's twenty thousand or more, probably more, it should actually be, um, you said technology, we should call it technology, it won't just all be computers. And I do think that professional consultant fees for a technology consultant, I, I think that's very, um, very much in the spirit of things.
And I think I mentioned, but just in case I didn't, is there so many things that I'm balancing in my brain? Um, when Jeremy comes, he's hoping to assess all of our
Yes.
technologies so that we have a comprehensive look at that. We've already replaced, um, various pieces of equipment in our circle closet this year and our wifi counting device, um, I don't remember what those things are called, they're switches of some kind, he's replaced those this year for us.
No, I think that would be very, very valuable.
So.
In programming, I feel very strongly, we should, we should include that in our budget. Um, but fifteen, six, I think that's, that's step by the way it operates.
Do you think, when you say we should include that in the budget, I think we should certainly plan for it. Are you thinking, put it in the budget that goes to the city and county or budget it in the way that we're gonna spend two fifteen and two sixteen funds?
Um, oh. Um, I was thinking of the city county.
A line item?
Yeah, but, um, that, that was what I was thinking.
I think we should think about that for twenty twenty-six, but twenty twenty-five is already there. And one of the things listed under the two fifteen for possible uses is programs and shows.
Mm-hmm, so this time, okay, mm-hmm, I like that. Make sure we got it this time and then budget for next year and.
Uh, yeah, I think it should be a line item and maybe we would take the money out of this fund that we might still, or some money out of this fund, but we, we should have it in the budget that goes to the city and the county, even if it's how shall I say, even if it's smaller than fifteen thousand because we take some of the money from here. But it just, it doesn't make sense to be chasing the dollars. It should be an established part of our budget.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, how would you like to wrap up for today? This is a pretty thorough, um, conversate- conversation, just digging into the discussion. What the priorities are, what the monies are looking like, how quickly they replenish. How would you like to wrap up for today and what kind of work could I do before our next meeting or the meeting after that would help, help you?
Well, are, are the audio visual, is that technology within sundews, um, expertise or is that a different?
Well, I don't know.
Would we ask about that, is maybe able to put that into technology?
Okay, a lot of that, I think, these days is, is, um, digital. So we should ask Jeremy about, I don't know, is there such a thing as a digital projector or? I don't know.
I'd like to speak with Patrick Knight as well, especially with the city liquor store rebuild, I know that he's having to look at how to manage the board meetings over there and what kind of technology that they needed, um, to go remote and, um, just in terms of like programming and things, it's been my dream to get a television monitor which is lighted from inside rather than light projected on the screen, I think the quality is much better, but with the ceiling limitation, it would always be bam, like a TV right there. It's not like I can, um, have it disappear into the ceiling unless it goes somewhere else. And then having some of those cords and things buried in the wall, like instead of having this large maps thing, could I have my tech center that open, has a locked door? Opens up during programs, we're not hauling, um, sound systems at pieces, and that's kind of where I was going with that, I think it's like, it would be so nice if some of this stuff was just installed. But only so many projects at a time, guys.
Well, since we've talked about technology, I'm gonna throw out some ideas and then we can you can stay if you have the time to do it. So first of all, you'll be meeting with Jeremy.
Yes.
And so it would be helpful if we could have a, maybe a summary of what he has to say, how it's gonna be.
Yes.
Um, if you meet with Patrick, maybe same thing?
Yep.
Okay, so as a start.
And also Zach for doors.
Yeah, okay. And, you know, maybe, maybe that's more than enough. We, if time allows and you have the energy to do it, maybe, um, talking to your colleagues perhaps, in larger library, I'm thinking Duluth, to find out, just in general, what they're doing with technology or what their patrons are asking for. And again, I, that's further down on this, that might be an interesting.
If I have the time, I will. I'm gonna prioritize safety response and just getting our new employees up and running.
Yes.
Um, and then also make sure that even if I'm not circling back to this part quickly, that it would be a part of the conversation if you set technology as a priority.
Okay, that's fair.
But I love the feedback, I really do, I appreciate it. So I will bring this back to the board with a refreshed list and potentially some summaries from the technicians that I'm working with.
Okay, and does that seem doable for you or, or, we don't wanna exhaust you.
Jeremy and Zach are on the schedule for the end of this month. Okay, let's go, on those two at least.
Yeah, frankly, every single item on per consideration, I support.
Thank you.
It's, it's, um, it's just prioritizing them and, you know, not biting off more than we can chew and, and I'd rather not overextend ourselves both time, energy, as well as just lots of money and I mean, project management is a thing too, so, um.
Okay.
I, I mean, I love the streaming services idea too, I mean, that kind of ties into the technology, but not really, especially if it's for home, I, I'm not familiar with but I'll check that out too, and the shelving. I'm familiar with Hulu, but, um, and in the shelving, that seems like, ah, we have to do that if it's or just, you know, I think that's really important too, so there's nothing out here that I don't support. I, I'd rather fix the Dropbox if we can rather than replace, um, otherwise, I think it's, it's great, I would, and I think we already talked about it, I would rather hit the air source heat pump sooner rather than later and then do the optimizing or, I mean, just, if we can get all that completed, but step by step and, um.
Thinking about the Dropbox, um, is that a possi- is it a possibility that that could be done in, I'm not sure what kinds of art classes they offer in the, in the high school? But could that be done in cooperation with an art class perhaps?
It's a great idea, and the AP students or something.
Yeah, well, in that case, you could have it painted each year.
Mm-hmm, that's kind of fun, wow, organized needed or, yeah.
It could be part of their coursework.
And I, I'm sorry, can you, the, the meeting room and for the emergency exit?
The meeting room for the emergency exit?
It says add an emergency exit in the meeting.
Uh, this room, we are looking primarily right there. At that window, there are also conversations about wherever it is that the flat, you know, whatever it is here in the middle here. Um, but that one in, in particular, um, there is no emergency exit in this area. This is where we pack everybody in for our programming, this is where we hide our littles. And if we have someone coming in over there, the nearest exit is behind us back here and many people don't actually know that it exists. Whereas if you had, uh, an option here in this space, it would be more visible and part of the psyche of the people who are in the room, I think.
Um, when it, I mean, then, then that space is taken. You know, like, that has to be clear. And that cuts into that, I like, I mean, I, I guess no matter where you go, it's gonna be the case, but like a corner, like, I don't know, I hear, yeah, I know expert there on placement, but but you're talking about the main space, just an additional exit.
Okay, so, um.
That seems like a low, a low quote for that too, seems like a pretty major.
This quote covers the door.
Yeah.
And a hole in the wall to put it in. It, I'm not sure what kind of finishing work it allows for. It does not cover any of the legal requirements for around the door, like the pad and the lighting and all the things. So I'm actually expecting closer to ten or twelve. Also, in terms of being the expert for the location of a door, one, we have Ann Voda at BTR Architects reviewing our space and, um, considering this from more of a security perspective. Two, I've also been connected with a member of CISA who provides free vulnerability assessments to local uh, government buildings or public access whatevers. I'm gonna be speaking with him, I think, before the end of this month as well. Um, so I'm hoping he'll come out and maybe give another, another opinion. Um, I, we have, there are concerns about putting the door there because of sending people right back out to the exit that the.
I like, I like it right there, but maybe that's.
It's still, everybody's gotta run over here.
Right, yes.
And we're already doing that there.
Right, right.
But I hear you for space and like how we're using the place.
We'll see it there.
Heavy side, you have a contribution.
I have a lot of personal experience in this giving, they should have died in January, fourth nineteen seventy-nine. Had a lot of personal experience in escaping, they should have died in January of nineteen seventy-nine, didn't. And I didn't run. So I, I found the exit. Because the rest of the building was gone. You could feel the cold air. But you had to be. Quiet and understanding and being a little rational. So I don't know, just even thinking about running will be wrong.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll uh, I'll certainly lean on the architects and the, with the security.
I do have Anna double booked because we usually wrap up at five thirty. I wonder if we could wrap here and then continue the conversation in our next meeting. Oh, please.
Requesting the closure on Thursday.
Yeah, hey.
Is there any discussion on that? We should have a motion.
I'll make a motion to um close the library for October third.
Is there any other discussion?
It's for, uh, we're having Sheriff Eliasen come do run hide um fight. In the morning, library friends has, uh, is going to do a friendly luncheon with us. In the um lunchtime and then I'm still looking for an afternoon session.
Any, any further discussion? Putting down all those in favor of closures, say aye.
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 Thank you so much, you guys.
Make a motion to adjourn. It was mostly, it's like.
Yeah.
Um, I, for, for, for the, I guess we're adjourned, but for the record, I don't. Go for motions anymore because of your, your guidance.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sullivan always has her motion adjourned and.
Well, I think that's part of what's been taught, you know.
Yep.
I, I realize that so many people, at least in central Minnesota. Learned whatever they know about Robert's rules by, at four H. And because all those meetings are supposed to be run that way and they're taught from the very little. Except they're taught wrong in a few places, so there's always lots of incorrect. But that's where a lot of people learn.
Interesting. And with that, I'll go ahead and end the stream.